In the absence of Mayor Shapiro, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Here.
Trustee Jacoby?
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim is absent, and Mayor Shapiro is absent, but we do have a quorum.
I'd like to ask for a motion to ask to have trustee Benton appointed as our presiding officer for the meeting in consistent with our rotating rule of how we operate.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll be all alone over here.
Bob, you get to assume the position. Did I actually say that?
Well, while I'm doing that, could we please all answer the questions?
Okay.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands,
All right, first thing we have to do then after the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a proclamation, informative and important proclamation to read, which I will do right now. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature and teaching and study of the American history. Now therefore, I, in lieu of Daniel Shapiro, mayor of Deerfield, proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month in the village of Deerfield, Illinois, to honor and celebrate the history and contributions of the women in our community, our state, and our nation, dated this day of March 4th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve the proclamation?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And we have Renee from our Community Relations Commission, Bob, if you want to
Absolutely.
honor them, the group that brought this proclamation forward.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. On behalf of the Community Relations Commission, I'd like to thank you, our mayor who's not here tonight, for your proclamation, and I'd like to thank the entire village board for fostering a community that values and supports women and girls in every endeavor. A little bit of background on Women's History Month. A remarkable woman named Gerda Lerner is broadly considered as having created Women's History Month. Gerda Lerner was born Gerda Hedwig Kronstein on April 30, 1920, in Vienna, Austria, where her father, Robert, owned a large pharmacy. Her mother, Ilona, a free-spirited bohemian at heart, tried unsuccessfully to reconcile her own budding career as an artist with her duties as a housewife and mother. This struggle to reconcile those two aspects of her life made a marked impression on young Gerda. The Kronsteins were eventually forced to flee from the Nazis in 1938. Gerda immigrated to the United States, where she never lost her zeal for questioning authority and calling out gender inequality. She went on to marry a radical filmmaker named Carl Lerner. Gerda Lerner became a leader in the American academic world, writing many seminal books on feminism, patriarchy, and human rights. In her 1993 obituary in the New York Times, Ms. Lerner was quoted as having said, "All human beings are practicing historians. We live our lives, we tell our stories. It is as natural as breathing. It is as important as breathing too. History shapes our self-definition and our relationship to community. It locates us in time and place and helps give meaning to our lives." I think Gerda Lerner would appreciate our own Women's History Month Community Participation Project that we have devised with the Community Relations Commission. I am a member of the Community Relations Commission. I'm a volunteer, and I know she would admire the broad diversity of artistic expression, which we've seen so far as submissions from the community. For Women's History Month, the Community Relations Commission has issued a call for art submissions from our own artist residents. We've invited the community to submit a photo of their original artwork and to name a historical woman who has inspired them. Our local artists have been sharing an array of artworks ranging from abstract to portraiture, and they have named diverse historical heroes, ranging from Dolly Parton to Deerfield's own Elaine Silberman. Their thoughtful responses and fabulous artwork will be displayed online, on the village website, and on our community access channel throughout Women's History Month, which is the month of March. As ever, our Deerfield residents continue to inspire us all. Thank you again.
And thank you for the participation of your group, your commission. We are extremely proud of you and of the other women who participate in the life of Deerfield, in the other commissions as well, including my three colleagues who share the front of this room with me, two of whom are here tonight, and who have, and others who have served before them. It's a wonderful tradition, and we're proud of all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to ask for the approval of the board meeting minutes from the last meeting, which was February 24th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote, or is this?
Voice vote.
Voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, one of the more exciting reports at this point, the treasurer report. Eric?
Never want it to be exciting.
Certain people you don't want to excite. Dentists, doctors, and your finance director. This is the January 2024 Treasurers Report. It represents the first month of the new year. There's not a lot of analysis we can do, only one month in, but I do have a few highlights for tonight. Sales tax continues to exceed the prior two years. That's due largely to the increase in cost of goods that are being sold. Water and sewer billings reflect lower usage months, really typical this time of year. Interest income continues to outperform the projection. Rates are staying high. Don't know how long that's going to stay, but we'll take it as long as we can. Hotel tax reflects payments from all six hotels, as well as two back payments. So we are up to date at the end of January and even into February. Looking forward a little bit, we're up to date with all six hotels there. State income tax, food and beverage tax, and building permits are all up from last month, or from same period of last year, early in the year, but off to a good start on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, most of the payments that we make in January actually relate back to 2023, so you don't see them reflected in this report. But overall, so far, operating expenditures are below projection as expected. That's due to seasonal or once-a-year type expenditures for general liability insurance, memberships, special events, those kind of things. Only one year in, but so far, so good.
Do we have any questions of Eric? I have one. It's actually more for, I think, Bob Phillips than Eric. The wonderful weather that we've had in the month of February, the hottest February we've ever had, and we're getting an early start on things, does that cause us any complications financial-wise because you're getting started on these road repairs and other things?
So, getting an early start on concrete patching and construction projects, et cetera. Construction projects are pretty well fixed price. You know, we've already awarded the contract for this year, so that won't have an effect on that. The effect on purchasing material for, like, concrete, asphalt, construction materials that we do for in-house type projects, you may see, you may see an increase in our expenditure this year. It depends on, you know, it'll depend on what happens later on in the season. But an early start does, would signify that we're going to purchase more concrete and asphalt this year.
Now, the only thing that concerns me is that in the past, by experience, if you start your asphalt repairs too early, the plants aren't open.
Yeah, so at this time, we haven't heard that plants are opening early. We know that they're, I mean, not super early, I should say. We know they're going to open at least a week or two early, but not, they aren't opening concrete plants or asphalt plants at this time. Asphalt plants won't be open until probably April, beginning of April.
But the concrete we're repairing now, we're getting it done now, we're not going to have to wait until September, October, and worry about the season.
Yeah, these are things that
You're getting the work done, which is great.
Yeah, a lot of times, we're pushing up against the end of the season, so we won't be doing that this year, most likely.
And my wife informs, informed me that there was an asphalt repair on Waukegan Road. That may have been IDOT. She said she thought it was Deerfield, but it's all done now.
We had a water main repair today. Yeah, so today, we had land closures for water main repair. We also have, coming up in the next couple of weeks, we have a big sewer repair that's going to be in the same vicinity, and we're getting that done in advance of IDOT coming in and do their resurfacing project. So that's all planned work and budgeted for.
Good timing.
Yeah, so we're trying to fix the underground before IDOT finishes the surface, so that you don't have to come back in and ruin the new surface later on.
Thank you.
That's the intention.
But Bob, what are you going to do with all that salt?
That's a good question.
Save it for next year, buddy.
You have a garage, don't you?
We have a lot of it.
We're looking for storage right now. So we do have, we actually, we have to take 1,900 more tons before August of this year. So we're going to, we have a spot in our Public Works yard on Hackberry, next to the wastewater treatment plant. We're going to store that extra material there and tarp it. We've done this in the past. The most that we've stored there in the past is about 1,000 or 1,100 tons, so it's a little more than usual, but it has happened. I think it was probably, it's been 10 years or so since we've done that. But it does happen. And we placed orders for, we placed an order for next season last week, so.
And again, a good problem, right?
It's a good problem. Yeah, it's definitely a good problem to have. We've had the opposite problem, Kent, you know, Kent remembers, you know, we ordered, we couldn't get rock salt one year. We had to have rock salt trucked in from, I think Kentucky, and then from the East Coast, was like, three times the price of what we would normally pay. So, definitely a good problem to have.
Thanks.
Thank you. At this point, bills and payroll?
You know, motion to approve?
Yeah. Will you take a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
All those, roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This is the time of the meeting, and I don't see the people who are here before, but this is the time in the meeting that public comment can be taken. I think we've probably exhausted everybody after the proclamation.
And nobody signed in.
Yeah, and nobody signed in, so we'll move on to reports. Reports, planning commission, recommendation to approve the zoning map. Kent?
As we do every year, we approve, the village board has to approve the 2024 zoning map, which includes zoning changes largely of the R4 district along Lake Cook Road this year, a couple of other minor changes, but this is so we can publish and complete that zoning map.
I have to tell you, it's very unusual to drive down Lake Cook Road and see all those empty buildings there. Very unusual sight. And, oh, and the signs in front of it that say "For Sale."
Yep.
Just like if it was a private home. All right.
Do you need to ask for public comments, and then trustee comments?
Yeah. There's no public.
There is no public.
So we will take trustee comments on the planning and zoning map for the year, if anybody has them.
Nope.
Nope.
And again, as recommended by the planning commission, they review this.
Right. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Report, I'm sorry, to approve the report.
Then direct the preparation of an ordinance.
Absolutely.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yep.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks to staff and planning commission for that. What we think is routine, but in some places, it doesn't happen, so we're very glad that our group does what they're supposed to do.
We have now the consent agenda, and Kent, do you want to take that, or?
Happy to, the ordinance, on the consent agenda tonight, the ordinance granting modification from section 2.04 H-3 of the Deerfield zoning ordinance for the property located at 725 Fox Hunt Trail to permit the installation of a fence within the defined front yard, 4.5 feet in height, in lieu of the maximum permitted height of three feet, and two, a resolution authorizing and approving a midterm agreements with the two collective bargaining agreements units in the village of Deerfield.
Do we have any comment from trustees, or from anyone else?
No.
In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And one last item there is the resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Northbrook School District 27 concerning the
Wait, no, no. We missed two items. We've got a couple more under new business.
Oh.
Thanks, Steve.
Other side of this.
No, I don't see this.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't on the other side.
It's right here, at least.
Yeah, I have it on this agenda.
Okay.
Always prepared to, you have two agendas. First item of new business is the resolution awarding purchase of networking equipment and services. Matt, is that your item?
This is a big one for us. If we go down, you go down, so.
Good evening. I have before you tonight a request for purchase of networking equipment. We have one very large piece of equipment that sits at the very core of our computer network. This device is very old. It's been implemented since early 2015, and it is reaching end-of-life status from its manufacturer. You're probably used to hearing me saying that quite a lot. We do try to get as much mileage as we can out of this equipment because it is costly. It is important for us to keep supported equipment because it allows us to get software updates and to get timely replacement of parts if equipment ever fails. This is probably the most critical piece of equipment we have in our network. It sits at the very center. Everything in the village talks to each other through this piece of equipment. I'm also requesting waiver of competitive bidding for this purchase. In the, in this particular industry and in software, the manufacturers tend to give lowest pricing to a reseller or value-added partner that you have worked with before and/or the first one that you talk to. So, that has proven itself by two other additional formal quotes that I have solicited. The quote from our incumbent networking equipment reseller, Heartland Business Systems, was significantly lower than the two other quotes, so requesting waiver of bidder for that reason. The total cost of the project is $91,192.85, of which $78,000 and change is hardware and manufacturer, provided support and maintenance agreements, and the balance of just shy of $13,000 is professional services for assistance with implementing this equipment. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of the board?
Do you expect we'd get nine years with this next one, too? What's the lifespan?
We're, we're planning to replace this one very large piece of equipment, piece of equipment with a collection of separate pieces of equipment. It will allow us to architect our network a little bit better in terms of being able to do updates or replacements without causing as much of an operational outage to the village, in particular, public safety, since they're here around the clock. We don't really have the opportunity to do some of these very intrusive updates and replacements without impacting them. So, really trying to minimize the frequency with which we have to do that. Replacing this one very large piece of equipment with five smaller pieces that work together to accomplish the same goal will allow us to do that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Trustee Benton, may I note that you only have four voting members here tonight. If you want to proceed with this this evening, you, the motion maker, may want to consider moving the approval of the resolution pursuant to the village's home rule authority to waive otherwise applicable village rules.
I will.
And staff would recommend that.
I would, I would ask that that be included in the, in the approval of the motion. Does it also have to have the waiver of competitive bids?
Well, that's part of, the resolution states that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for approval, including the changes that, or the amendments that council has given me?
I'd make a motion to accept the resolution as amended by council.
Second.
So, just to be clear, the resolution is amended, but we're exercising, you're pursuing this action by exercising your home rule authority to waive otherwise applicable village rules. We'll make sure that's in the minutes if the motion maker accepts that language.
Yes, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Did you have a comment on the resolution on Mayor Bommer?
Thank you.
No, Ryan's going to do that, of course. And we're going to look for a similar motion, I think, in this account, too, so anticipate that. I'll guide you through that, in the same way.
The, the next item is the resolution to award the Family Day's firework contract to Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions.
Thank you. Good evening. So each year, the village of Deerfield puts on a firework show on July 3rd as part of our July 3rd and 4th Family Days festivities. For over 25 years, the village has worked with Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions to set up the display. Staff is confident in their abilities and with the quality of their performance. Due to the villages, the village of Deerfield and the Deerfield-Bannockburn Fire Protection District's long working history with Mad Bomber, staff has historic, has not historically obtained proposals from other fireworks companies. We reached out to other vendors this year, but they were non-responsive. Funding for this work has been included in the 2024 Family Days budget. Staff is requesting that the mayor and board of trustees waives the competitive bidding process and approves the resolution to award the Family Day's fireworks contract to Mad Bomber Fireworks Production in an amount not to exceed $35,000.
And I might add a comment. Where we live, we can sit in our neighbor's driveway, just around the corner from us, and watch the fireworks go up and down. And last year, sitting there, the comments of people going by was, wow, this is the best one we've seen. So, I'm very much in favor, but I'll take a roll call vote. And again, the
Well, let's hear the motion.
Yeah, I was going to say, but council is going to advise us.
If you're interested in approving this tonight, then the motion maker should include in the motion that you're going to move to approve the resolution through an exercise of the village's home rule authority to waive otherwise applicable village rules.
Do I have a?
And again, staff would recommend that action.
I was going to say, do we have a motion to approve? You had the resolute, resolution down pat. You want to do it again?
I don't know about that, but I would so move to accept the resolution and exercise our home rule authority in waiving the competitive bid process.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good job, Larry.
Next resolution is approving the governor, the intergovernmental agreement with Northbrook School District 27 concerning the Village of Deerfield-Lake Cook redevelopment project, Tax Increment Financing, or TIF District for short.
Thank you. This village board and staff are in pursuit of forming the Lake Cook Road TIF District. Northbrook School District 27 has requested that the village enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the district to provide funding in the event that the village uses TIF assistance in the development of housing in the TIF district that increases the number of students attending the school. This document is identical to the IGA that this board entered into last year with Deerfield School Districts 109 and 113. The school board, District 27, has already approved this agreement in this form. Staff and the village attorney have negotiated this agreement and recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do, does anybody have any questions?
So we're entering this because if we, if there were homes put in that, in that area, they would be in Northbrook School Districts?
Correct.
And then, the, any financial benefits that come from the TIF, would they benefit Northbrook Schools?
So, the, being that they, they would not receive increase in property tax from the TIF district throughout that 23 years, if students were generated, through the TIF Act, we would already be providing them some funding. Oftentimes, that's not sufficient to cover the actual cost of a student, so this would be supplemental funding above and beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
And just, the underlying premise is, but for the TIF, that the, the benefits of the school district would remain the same, stagnant or lower. The school district will enjoy significant benefit when the TIF is over, and that's the premise of tax increment financing.
Got it. Thank you.
Did, I understand it correctly, the money doesn't come from the TIF project, it comes from another source? Is that right?
The funding is, it would come from TIF surplus funds, so it's subordinate to all of the other eligible TIF expenses, so all of our debt obligations, capital improvements we need to make, so after all of that, basically all of the funds to support the development in the first place, if there's surplus after that, then these, these funds could be used, and actually will be used, to then supplement to District 27. Again, only in the event that students are actually generated, new students are actually generated there from the development that got TIF assistance in the first place.
For the 23 years, or beyond the 23 years.
So we'll reconcile it on an annual basis. They'll, they'll, they'll show us if there's a new student.
Right.
Right.
And again, you'll review, if there's, if there's an apartment proposal or a housing proposal, then you'll know that, and we'll have that conversation. But we're anticipating that's not what's going to happen here. But we also respect the school district's interest that if it does happen, you got to, you got to cover them, right? Because they got expenses.
So we're anticipating a similar or identical agreement, I should say, with District 225, but that's just not high school district.
It's the school district in Glennburg, North Carolina.
Just like we did with Deerfield Schools, and for the downtown, we did both the elementary and the high school. This would also be, for the high school district, would be School District 225, so we may come back to you in the next couple of weeks with that. They're still working through it, through their finance committee. And then, March 18th, at the next board meeting, staff will bring for the board's consideration the three enabling ordinances to effectuate the TIF district itself.
Great.
And for those of us with long memories, when we had the TIF district in Deerfield, among other things that developed Deerfield Square and other sites that have proven very valuable to us, we had a hue and cry of the people who sat in these chairs out there and said, you're taking money from the schools and they will suffer for it. And it turned out that in the TIF district, in the financing, what was not used went back to the schools. They were happy. We were happy. It was, it was a wonderful result all around, and I have no doubt that we can work that out with this, with the Northbrook Schools as well.
History speaking about significant surpluses were passed along to all districts, whether it's 109, 113, 27, or 225 in our history, and I, and that's part of what Andrew's presentation was at the last board meeting, as well as at the JRB meeting. And we, we got acknowledgement from the school districts in Northbrook that we passed along significant surpluses that were really beneficial to, like, millions, million-dollar-a-year surpluses that made a huge difference for them.
And District 27, some of that same faculty is there, and they remembered that. So that was very helpful in our discussions.
So sailing along on that, on those lovely seas, lovely smooth seas, may I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Well, we, we've reached the end of the meeting at this point. We have still maybe some items for discussion by the mayor and board. I don't have any at the moment, but do the trustees have any, that they need to talk about?
I do not.
No, you did great.
Then Kent, it comes to you.
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
You make it easy. Hearing nothing further, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move approval.